I want to take this opportunity to acknowledge and pray for our family and friends in Puerto Rico through the tragedy of the hurricane and Maria. Many Puerto Ricans from the city of Waterbury, I happen to be of Puerto Rican descent who have family still there and friends who are unaccounted for, who we have been unable to communicate with. It's been very trying times for us. And I can tell you that there's times where I'm there physically, but mentally you're somewhere else. And so I ask that you continue to keep Puerto Rico in your prayers, as well as our friends in Mexico with the earthquake and Mexico City. So a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Commissioner Otero, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Watt?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Vice President Rodriguez?
Here.
Commissioner Stango?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Otero?
Here.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Present.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
Present.
President Brown?
Here. Thank you. And I had a request from our IT people that we speak directly into the microphone so that we could be heard. Sometimes it's hard for them to pick it up, so if we could remember to speak directly into our microphone. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is communications of September 21st, 2017. Copy of communication from civil service dated September 5th, certifying Joseph Core for the position of maintainer 1. Copy of communication from civil service dated September 5th, certifying Tahajli Gonzalez Perez for the position of lunch lady, lunch aide, sorry. Copy of communication from civil service dated September 6th, certifying Patricia DeChardens for the position of lunch aide. Copy of communication from civil service dated September 6th, certifying Christine Daisy and Stephanie Ramos for the position of paraprofessional. Email communication dated September 6th from Margaret Caiozo regarding pre-K classroom. Copy of communication from civil service dated September 7th, certifying Lisa Moore for the position of administrative associate 1. 7 and 8 email communications dated September 9th and September 10th from Margaret Caiozo regarding classroom situations. Number 9 email communication dated September 15th from Kabe regarding policy highlights. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to receive and place on file communications as read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Next, and I want to thank Carrie for keeping us all on track with the updating of the minutes. And we'd like to have approval of the following minutes. March 20th workshop, April 6 regular meeting, April 20th special workshop, April 20th special meeting, April 27th workshop, May 1 special workshop, May 4 regular meeting, May 11 workshop, May 18 regular meeting, May 25 workshop, June 1 regular meeting, June 8 workshop, June 15 regular meeting, June 22 special meeting, July 27 workshop, July 27 special meeting, and August 3 regular meeting. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion approved the minutes as read.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstained?
One abstention, so noted. Thank you. Motion carries. Okay.
Motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
At this point, there are no speakers signed up to speak, but I'll open if anybody would like to speak. Seeing none?
Motion to return the regular order of business?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Okay, superintendent's announcements.
Thank you, Madam President, very brief remarks this evening, but really taking to heart Vice President Rodriguez's opening remarks with the devastation that has hit both Puerto Rico and Mexico over the last couple of weeks. We have a large amount of generosity happening throughout the district. I've listed those for you, but one in particular, we will be raising funds as a district in support of the hurricane relief efforts. Students, parents, and staff can purchase a yellow wristband for $1. Larger donations also are being accepted at this point, and they can wear and show wristbands to show the support for all the victims. And I've highlighted all that for you. A lot is happening out of the Office of Family and Community Engagement on 236 Grand Street, Room 104. So just want to highlight for those, I've listed a lot of the generosity that's happening throughout the district. Also, just to highlight, the gathering will take place this Saturday, September 23rd. The parade will start at 11:00 a.m. and end in Library Park with a full day of celebration of ethnic food, music, and dance will take place. All our schools are participating, so it will be a wonderful event. Also, 15 students from the Waterbury Career Academies, 2018 certified nursing aides program successfully passed their CNA exam. They will be officially pinned at a ceremony on Monday, September 25th at 6:00 p.m. in the fourth floor of the health suite at the Career Academy. And also, Career Academy is hosting a college career fair for its students on Thursday, September 28th from 9:00 to 10:30. Seniors and juniors will have the opportunity to visit with representatives from colleges and business. The annual school governance council back-to-school breakfast is Friday, September 29th from 9:00 to 10:30 at Gil Martin School. And there is a special community forum to review the recommendations of the Connecticut Commission of Human Rights on Tuesday, September 26th from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. at Reed School, very important event. And the annual Title I District Parent Advisory Council meeting will be held on Wednesday, October 4th from 5:30 to 7:00 at the Waterbury Arts Magnet School. That concludes my remarks, Madam President, and I'll entertain any questions the board may have at this time.
I'm just wondering, is there a phone number for people to call in case they would like to donate? Should we give them a number or?
We can do that. I can have Mrs. Merrill certainly circulate that out. A lot of publications and emails have been circulating around, but we can also place that on the website.
Great.
Oh, good.
Commissioner Harvey?
That was going to be my next question. Have we placed this information on the website? So we will, okay, thank you.
Great. Okay, and next on the agenda, as President comments, I just want to, again, extend my personal condolences and deepest sympathy for all the victims of these terrible hurricanes throughout, starting with Texas and Miami and Puerto Rico and the Virgin Islands and St. Martins. It's just, it just seems like it's unending and relentless, and if we can do anything for our students who have families, the public, please let us know. We can do our share. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. Would anybody like anything removed from the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none?
Yes. I'd like item 9.2 and 9.3 removed.
Okay. You have a second? Okay, all right. Okay, we'll read the consent calendar. 9.1 Committee on Finance requests approval to apply for two Connecticut State Department of Education 21st Century Community Learning Centers grants for Duggan and Reed grades 8 through 8, and Carrington-Gil Martin grades 6 to 8. 9.4 Committee on School Facilities and Grounds, use of school facilities by school organizations and/or city departments. 9.5 Committee on School Facilities and Grounds, use of school facilities by outside organizations and/or waiver requests. And it's a short consent calendar. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the consent calendar, items 9.1, 9.4, and 9.5.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Items removed from the consent calendar. 9.2 Committee on School Personnel. Commissioner Stango.
9.2 Committee on School Personnel requests approval of the job specifications for the proposed position of Assistant Talent Recruiter. Would you like me to read the rest of all of this through?
Sure.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the job specifications for and new position of Assistant Talent Recruiter as discussed.
So moved.
Motion to receive and place.
Second, Karen. Discussion. Commissioner Van Stone.
With apologies since I wasn't here for the workshop, if I could ask Ms. Hayes just a couple of questions if she would be so kind. Thank you. In reading through the position, I'm generally loathe to add any new payroll and salaries onto any budget, so I had some questions. One, it's my understanding, is this item paid out of the Alliance grant or a different grant, or what is the funding source of this?
It would be the Alliance at this point in time, Commissioner, but we're waiting for, you know, the budget to be settled. At this point, it is targeted for that.
Okay.
The Alliance, yes.
If doomsday comes and Alliance falls away, or it's not the number we think, is this contingent on Alliance money coming?
No, this would be a position that has been, if approved by the board, would stand, and then we would call a finance committee meeting, then we would probably look at funding source within the general fund.
And this person would report to Ms. Hayes?
I'm sorry?
This person reports to Mrs. Hayes?
That's correct.
Okay. And you're, not that I'm going to put you on the spot, this is something that you feel would be beneficial to your office?
Yes, it's for the position, not for me, to create a talent office.
Right.
Which is, yes.
So this is a position you think you would find helpful going out and helping recruit?
Yes, absolutely.
And what is it, about 45, 50 grand?
I believe it was 42. 42, yeah, is the starting.
Okay. Thank you both very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Roll call, please.
Do you want to roll call mode? Okay. Roll call by Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Watt?
Yes.
Commissioner Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice President Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Otero?
No.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
No.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
No.
President Brown?
Yes.
7-3, motion passes.
Okay, thank you, motion passes. Okay, 9.3 Commissioner Stango.
9.3 Committee on School Personnel requests approval of the job specifications for the proposed position of Early Childhood Special Education Supervisor. Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the job specifications for and the new position of Early Childhood Special Education Supervisor as attached, respectfully submitted and so moved.
Discussion. Commissioner Van Stone.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, I didn't have a great deal of argument on the first one. There is some room with some wording for Alliance for a talent-type person, but it becomes more of a fundamental thing with me on Alliance money for salaries. And now this one certainly bothers me. As I brought up in workshop, whether we think there's additional duties or not, and I only can be told there are, so I do take that into consideration. Here we are creating another six-figure salary, quite a bit of six figures. Actually, I think the low point of this particular item is 120. It bothers me greatly. I've asked routinely, and coincidentally, we are in negotiations with SAO right now, and usually we don't like to rock the boat when we do negotiations. However, we need to really consider, and I've brought this up before, what I refer to from my business world is a deputy position. We just jump people in to supervisory positions as opposed to ever thinking about people that could be in a deputy role. Take some of the workload off of the supervisor. Work at a different level. Have a much different relationship with the people that work for them, and in many cases, that's beneficial on a personnel level, as opposed to everyone being the boss. So we really need to start reconsidering, one, six-figure salaries on budgets, we don't even know what the numbers are, and as we mentioned in the first one, are we then going to be stuck with that salary? And secondly, to redefine our org tree, to have people that are the next level down. And I'm tired of just giving the union all these high-level positions that we could just place people in. We need to start having a true organizational tree so that we can work our way up to a supervisor and let a supervisor do a supervisor's job. To keep thinking we need help, which to me is an assistant, but we keep creating these full supervisory positions, I just don't get it. I don't get it. You know, I'm not in the empire-building business. I would like to see, and it would also be a great opportunity for someone coming up through the ranks, who we want to retain, we say retain all the time, an opportunity to take one step up instead of always looking outside the district for three steps up. So I, there's no way I can be in favor of this. The first job we talked about, I, was probably 60/40. It was a difficult one for me. This one, there's no denying, I'm 0/100. There's no way I can support this position. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Otero.
What is the funding source of this job?
I believe, I'm not sure what Mr. Schwartz quoted last week.
It's a good, it's Alliance grant, and just for the record, I was misquoted in the paper. The salary range is $100,000 to $124,000 commensurate with the SAO supervisor 12-month position. The funding is Alliance.
Thank you.
Well, I certainly made it clear through this past year how I feel about using Alliance money on the non-reform side to plug holes in the budget. If we can't, if we couldn't afford this in our regular budget, and we can only afford it through the Alliance grant, then I'm going to be opposed to it. However, there is a very strong argument, if you listen to the argument for the creation of this position and the tremendous rigor that this person is going to have to present and maintain in terms of pre-K certification, special ed certification, administration, supervision certification, we're looking at hen's teeth in a barnyard. It's going to be nearly impossible to find a person with these kinds of qualifications to begin with. I wonder what they're doing now in terms of looking for assistance when the supervisor of the program is not there. Is it the supervisor from Buck's Hill that fills in, or is it someone else that fills in? I do agree we need to sponsor initiatives for our special education department so that we can create these kinds of people with these kinds of qualifications. And this is a very, very special kind of program that is growing tremendously, has grown tremendously through the years. And I do agree with President Brown, ultimately, within a year or so, we need to look for another home for this program that more adequately fits these students' needs, special ed needs. So if it were going in our regular budget, I'd be in favor of it, but I just can't go against the grain that I feel in my heart and soul with regard to this Alliance money being taken out and not being utilized for the intent that it was initially presented for, educational reform. I've already spoken about how I feel educational reform has been doing, but that'll be another topic for another day, so I don't want to be called out of order for jumping around the, jumping over the fence here, so I'll vote my conscience. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just want to make a comment that the two personnel committee meetings that were held and had extensive conversation, and all these issues were raised, very legitimate issues. I kind of was sold on the whole idea from the standpoint of safety. As Commissioner Otero just said, we are bursting at the seams at the Buck's Hill annex, and we do not have a vice principal in that position. And I was convinced after hearing the scenarios that, from the perspective of the qualifications as well as the tremendous increase in students and the severity of the needs, as Commissioner Otero mentioned, I would just like to say that I felt strongly that, from a safety point, we needed another supervisor in that building, so that's why I will be voting in favor of it. Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Watt?
Yes.
Commissioner Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice President Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Otero?
No.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
No.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
No.
President Brown?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. 11 Committee on Curriculum, Commissioner Thomas Van Stone.
Thank you, Madam President, through you for item 11.1. Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on Curriculum, the Superintendent of Schools recommends approval for the new English Language Arts, ELA, curriculum, grades 6 through 8, respectfully submitted. Dr. Kathleen Lett, Superintendent Ms. Scholes.
Second.
Discussion. Commissioner Van Stone.
Just quickly, anytime I see curriculum on the agenda, I'm excited. We should have it on here more, as much as I like contracts and field trips, this is really what we're here for. So I just wanted to say thank you to the Curriculum Committee for shepherding this. Thank you all the staff who had hours and hours of time pouring into this over the summer and even longer, and it's exciting to actually do good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Van Stone?
If I may, and this is kind of a general comment for both items, so I'll just get it out of the way early. I did have the opportunity, Superintendent was kind enough to invite me to a session this summer where I sat in somewhat quietly, especially for me, with the teachers. And each group I sat with, one of the first things I asked each group was, as someone who will sign, right, we don't really like to redline this, that's not necessarily our job here, however, but the one who will actually sign this piece of paper, I don't want teachers that are robots. And I said it to every single group that I talked to. I think the day I was there, Superintendent, there was maybe eight or nine different sessions going on, if I'm not mistaken. It was a busy morning. Busy morning.
It wasn't as full as the summer, but it was.
And actually, I was told that was a quiet morning.
It was a quiet morning.
Okay? I was very proud of the teachers that came forward. They did a tremendous job, and it's not by accident that ELA is the first one out of the box here. You're right, Commissioner Van Stone, we have a lot of work to do, a lot of work to do. When it was brought to my attention, when I took over this committee, of the hundreds of lower-level curriculums that have not been through this board in over 20 years, we knew we had to do something. And that was probably the easiest decision the committee had. So I'm very proud to put this forward. I'm very proud of the teachers. As I told the Superintendent, now we need supervision to be the chairleaders to make sure it works, to make sure people on board, we're never going to please everyone. It's a living document, we will move forward, but this was the key one to get out the door first, very key one to get out the door first. So I'm actually, as the Chair of this committee, very proud to put this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Oh, I just wanted to thank you for those comments. It is an adopted curriculum now, certified by this board, if they approve it, and, you know, it does go into law as soon as Carrie stamps an adopted date on it and sends it out, so I want to thank you for your support of this.
Commissioner Otero.
I'm going to assume that this new curriculum has the approval of the committee with regard to curriculum alignment with regard to the standardized tests that we've been seeing. I know you have the same passion as I do, and I know other board members have contacted me with the passion after seeing the scores and hoping for improvement. So I think, you know, as we see what's on these tests and we see what they're looking for and what they're testing for, our curriculum needs to be reflective of that. I can remember some of the teachers teaching, instead of teaching in math, they would start off with Chapter 10, because they didn't get to Chapter 10 by the time the test came, and so we did Chapter 10 first to make sure that that was done. You know, that was regard to math, and I'm sure with regard to other things, with regard to language arts. So I compliment you on your committee and your vision for the future, and hopefully we're going to see some tremendous changes, even, not tremendous changes, even some significant changes, you know, where we see some schools actually reaching those state averages or coming close to those state averages, so we know that the teaching and the learning that we're doing is indicative of what the students, the effort that they put in. I particularly liked the presentation at Kennedy the other night with regard to the SATs and the variability of teaching students online, teaching out of the box, and using, I don't want to say unorthodox methods, but alternative methods in helping students regain credit. Students that have been there with no credits at all, looking for a way to help them, looking at a way for them to not only increase their testing scores on the SATs, but give them credit at the high school level so they can actually graduate and use that SAT score to go to college. Because without college or a trade, I mean, you know, you're kind of done in the real world today. So I compliment you, Commissioner Van Stone. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may just add?
Yes, go ahead.
I truly am very proud of this moving forward, and one of the features in the three-ring binder for each that we're going to vote on tonight, that was in excess of two inches thick, which only gets you to the baseline, then you could go other avenues. One of the pieces that really impressed me on this piece of curriculum is, is the circular evaluation. And when I say circular evaluation, the students are also, have a page in this book to evaluate how they felt they progressed. It didn't stop at the teachers.
Yeah.
There's, that was, you know, and it may have been small, it may have been a small section of the book, but I was very impressed, the fact that we're going to the students to say, "Did you learn?" And if not, and I think that's an opportunity that students really need to take advantage of. Okay, so I guess I'll get off my high horse, but I am very proud of this coming forward to you folks.
Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you. Just to interject, because I have sat through most of the curriculum meetings, and I know this was mentioned, but I'm just going to mention it just to reinforce that the need to share this information with the parents. to share this information with the parents so that they understand what work is being done, because there are questions out there about the curriculum and whether or not the curriculum has been updated, et cetera. So I would hope that we would go through our face, you know, group and to the parent liaisons, et cetera, to ensure that at least the opportunity is given to the parents to get some knowledge of what we're doing. Thank you.
Great.
I'm going to interject again.
Commissioner Vanstone.
Sorry. I don't want to put Mr. Schwartz on the spot for exact dates, but we actually have four sessions coming up in the next couple of months where we're putting forward to parents that is a chance to not necessarily dive into individual curriculums, but at least come forward and speak to the experts. Darren, I don't know if you want to add to that, that we really encourage the parents to come forward and come to these meetings, four different locations, four different nights, mornings, evenings. I think we were pretty good about making it flexible, so.
Right, and just to add to that, they're not only taking places in schools as well. I believe Hispanic Coalition is one location, and so we were mindful that schools aren't always the best place to bring a community in all cases. And so, yes, we do have four workshops set up for the year for parents to be able to attend, and the communication of that will begin shortly.
Thank you.
Okay. Yep, and we'll make sure that that's advertised and really get the word out, because I think that's important. And that really is kudos to our supervisors who really listen to the public. This was something that came before us, and really, we responded, and I think with due diligence. Where am I? Discussion?
Roll call. Oh, no. All in favor?
All in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Next is 11.2. Commissioner Vanstone.
Thank you, Madam President. 11.2. The Board of Education, with the approval of the Committee on Curriculum, the Superintendent of Schools recommends the approval of the new English Language Arts, ELA, curriculum for grades nine through 10. Respectfully submitted, Dr. Kathleen Lett, Superintendent of Schools.
Second.
Discussion. Commissioner Theriault.
Yeah, I would probably say the same thing that I said about the other, but I would just add a footnote to this. With regard to the SATs, I hope that when they give it the next time, they give it on a Saturday or a day when they can actually do a written sample as well. Let's not take any shortcuts in evaluating our students by giving it during the week and saying, you know, we didn't have time during the week, so we didn't do a written sample. Let's schedule those SATs accordingly so we can really test the sampling of what a student has learned and what a student has accomplished. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent?
Yes, writing is certainly a focus of the Curriculum Committee. Even with the removal of that assessment from Smarter Balance, this district certainly made that a priority with writing and has not given up on that initiative, so I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
I was thinking more with the SATs, but the Smarter Balance is also important. Through the Chair.
Commissioner Vanstone.
A tad off-topic, but am I incorrect in remembering, didn't we sign some deal with somebody to allow our kids to take the SATs multiple times?
They have an SAT day, I believe.
October.
Isn't it October? Yes, we do. So they all take it on the same day.
But I thought they then had, it may not be in one of our buildings, but they could take it multiple times. Am I?
Yeah, they can, but I think it certainly accosts to them for the multiple take.
No, that's the thing we signed.
I'm not sure on that. I'm sorry, Commissioner.
The first one we pay for.
Right.
And that if they want to take it multiple times, they would have to pay.
Darren, I don't know, is it multiple free? I didn't believe that was.
No.
The one that we provide is free for the students, and they also take one according to, for the state exam as well.
Right.
If they want to take anything in addition to that, they will have to pay.
Yeah.
In addition to those exams.
I misunderstood. I thought whatever we had signed in essentially bought them unlimited testing. That's what I thought. I don't trust my memory, but that's what I thought.
No, it's not. One free, one comes.
Madam President, if you would, we could check that with Mr. Paul White.
I don't believe it is.
Yep, I will, yep.
Because I'm fairly certain that they have unlimited access to that test.
Oh, are you thinking about the College Board?
Yes.
Okay, that's ongoing, that's live, that's tutoring and lessons, that's ongoing. Correct. That's free, absolutely.
Yep.
But the actual SAT tests, I believe, one free, and then there's the state, and then if they want to, you know, take it again, that's, you know, it'll be their cost.
Wouldn't be the first thing I misremembered.
You know, if I may, what they had unlimited access to is how many schools they could send it to without a fee.
Is that what I?
Well, that's what I recall, because I was way back when, when I was here the first time, and I was.
We'll clarify.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
I didn't mean open a can of worms.
That's okay, we'll clarify it. But we know for certain, we do offer our students to take the SAT, and we do test them. So we're not sure if it's multiple, but the Khan Academy is something that they have access to now on an ongoing basis, that is individualized. And after they take the SATs, they can go on this program and they can be focused on the areas that they need improvement, which I think is great. So we'll clarify that. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay. Number 12, Superintendent's Notification to the Board.
Motion received and placed on file. Superintendent's Notification to the Board. Item 12.1 through 12. Five.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay. Thirteen, Unfinished Business of Preceding Meeting Only. I just had one comment to make. I want to thank our Director of Special Education, Melissa Baldwin, for giving us the information about our, how our district does respond in times of crisis and tragedy, how we communicate with the parents, that this did come up in our last meeting, and I want to thank her for giving us the, and the public, the accurate information. So it was very well done. Thank you. Any other comments? Yep. Commissioner Theriault.
Under Other Unfinished, New, and Miscellaneous Business. It has come to my attention that some field trips are being planned, and I'd like to know what the protocol is. I know we're not doing any out-of-country field trips anymore, for now. But I know we do do some field trips to various places, and I could have called Mr. Herman on this, but I figured I'd go right to the Superintendent. I get concerned when I hear X amount of students going in terms of how many chaperones are going to be there, and if they're going to be in a place like Timbuktu for a long time, and the amount of chaperones that they have and the security. This day and age, you know, we have to be very, very cognizant of our students, you know, and to have a student paired with another student and floating around a museum, that isn't my idea of good security. So before something were to happen and someone asked me to query this, I figured I'd bring it before the Board, and you can enlighten me on what the.
Thank you, Commissioner. What I'd like to do, and I think it's a very valid point, with everything that's happening in the Curriculum Committee, I hate to bring that back to them, but I would, I've been asking for a review of, A, with the new curriculum, how are the field trips aligning to the curriculum? I think it's important. And with that can be the policy, if we can go to Policy Committee, but I actually would like to begin that process with the Curriculum Committee, to be looking at that. These field trips should be aligning right with the curriculum, correct. And so with that, we can, I believe the Board's policy has been followed to the T. It is reviewed through the ILDs and through the Chief Academic Officers. They review it, make sure all the protocols, the number of chaperones are in order, but I think more to that point, with everything coming up, I think it's going to connect the dots, as you say, Commissioner. So I'd ask that that be placed on the agenda, just to have a discussion. Thank you for bringing that.
Yeah, I could see a larger number of kids having less chaperones in a local venue.
Right.
But when we're talking about going on buses and going overnights for three or four days, I'd be more comfortable with a lower amount in terms of, a larger amount of chaperones versus the number of students.
Yeah, I agree with the security issue, and I also agree that we need to look at the whole picture with that as well. You know, I'm concerned that some of these field trips are repetitive. Sometimes it would, third grade, same trip in fifth grade, and I want to make sure we're lining up with that. But, you know, we've had some with the curriculum itself, but it's time to look at that, as well as the resources and the textbooks adoption process, too. So I hate to throw all that on curriculum, but that's something that has to follow. Now, the curriculum, textbook adoption, and field trips that align for the resources. Okay? Thanks. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Commissioner Harvey?
Yes, thank you. While we're on that topic, I'd like to know if we can get an update on what is going on with the Great Debate trip given by the NAACP. I know they're pushing to get a number of students. I think it's a very worthwhile trip, and if we could just get an update. Last year, we could not go because of busing issues, so I'm just hoping we can work that out so that they can attend.
I believe Mrs. Wright is in the process. I know she has full steam ahead approval of it, but we can ask for an update.
All right. Thank you very much. Second is, I want to personally thank Commissioner Theriault. There's some things I kind of keep in my briefcase, and of late, this document, Commissioner Theriault, of which you put a lot of work into, and I know you mention it every, almost every workshop, every meeting, and I just want to thank you for all the work that you've put into this. I don't know if we've addressed this, we haven't talked about it, but we need to, and I would hope that this would be an item of discussion at a workshop soon, because I was confronted with this, I've been confronted with this a number of times, and so I just carry it with me and, you know, give comments. This is regarding the Waterbury School's Smarter Balance test results, 2015, 2016. And so, you know, I haven't heard any discussion on it. You have mentioned it a number of times, but I just want you to know that it's not going unnoticed. Okay? Next is, I just want to personally invite our Commissioners to the Community Forum on Tuesday, the 26th. Superintendent Willett has mentioned this, Tuesday, the 26th, at the Jonathan E. Reed School, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM, at this Community Forum. This is to satisfy the request from our CHRO Commission for transparency with the recommendations based on the filing of a complaint from the NAACP on the hiring practices of the Waterbury Public School System. So at this forum, we will, the mayor will start us off, and then we will give our accomplishments, what we're working on, next steps, and we will report to, we are obligated to report to the CHRO Commission in November and in May. It has been, it's a Dean an honor to work with this, the members of the Committee. We have attempted to have a diverse Committee, a Committee that can get work done, and to sit those groups down that haven't sat down together at a table. So again, Commissioners, I personally invite you to attend. I promise to get you out, keep you 5:30 to 7:00, and call it a night, and then move forward from there. Thank you.
She runs an excellent meeting. When she says that, she says that, she keeps to her word, she keeps us moving, so she does.
Vice President Rodriguez.
Thank you, President Brown, through you. I just, usually during this time of year, in September, particularly September 15 through October 15, we're excited with the idea that we're celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. Unfortunately, it's not feeling the same with the celebration piece. But I do want to mention that the Waterbury Public Schools and the Matituck Museum, as well as the Noble 365 Enterprise, is hosting an event Friday, September 29th, at 10:00 AM, at the Matituck Museum with Tito Puente Jr. He is the son of the Mambo King, Tito Puente, the king of Mambo, who I saw Junior perform phenomenally at the Palace Theater. And so this event, unfortunately, I won't be there, but I would encourage you, if your time permits, to please make it a point to attend. The other thing, just very quickly, I think the emotions got the best of me a little bit earlier, but I just want to say, from all these natural disasters that have occurred, I think oftentimes, one of the beautiful things that we do see is the human spirit, and that we tend to forget that regardless of our political affiliation, or how different we may look, that at the end of the day, we are human beings, and that we help each other out. And I also want to remind folks that Puerto Rico, those are U.S. citizens, those are our neighbors. And so I would encourage you to please extend your hand to your neighbors in whatever capacity you can, and whether that be a prayer, a monetary donation, and if it's a prayer, make it a genuine prayer. On Saturday, at the gathering, my colleague's representative, State Representative Geraldo Reyes, as well as Alderman Victor Lopez, will be manning a table at the gathering to collect any donations at that event. So thank you again so much, and please keep the prayers coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Theriault.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey, for those compliments. I do appreciate them, because I do spend hundreds and hundreds of hours just gathering the information. I almost feel like a dentist when I call the state, because trying to get the results from the state is like pulling teeth. It's absolutely incredible. You just can't get on a website and get this information, and even when you get a person on the phone that can give you the information, they are very reluctant in terms of sharing this information. It's absolutely incredible. However, I do want to compliment Tara Battistrone, who's in charge of our research and testing, and Darren Schwartz, who's our Chief Academic Officer, in verifying all the results of these tests. And it wasn't just the Smarter Balance, it was the CMT in science and the SATs in the high school. I kind of combined all three reports so that you could see at a glance. In fact, I'm still waiting for another year of scores from Mr. White on the SATs, because I think there are, there might be two years there that we could compare. We previously had given the CAP test at the high schools, which we're no longer doing. So now we have at least a, somewhat of a comparison on the SBA T or C, whatever they call it, on the Smarter Balance test, to see what the comparisons are for the last three years. And as you look at them, and I hate to be redundant, but you know me by now, when you look at the score at the state, the average of the score at the state, and you look at our scores, if we were to get close to that score, that would be a success. If that, if the score were 45 and a school got 45.6, their score would turn to green. Bingo. They achieved the balance. And these scores are very, very low. I mean, throughout the state, the scores, the achievable average score in the state is low. I mean, the score on the CMTs were low, but the scores are even lower on the Smarter Balance test. So I appreciate your comments and other members of the Board that have encouraged me and complimented me for doing this, and I did want to give a little shout-out to Tara Battistrone and Darren Schwartz for verifying the information, because I wouldn't put it out to you unless it was absolutely accurate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think it's important also to note that there is no comparison to the Connecticut Mastery Test, to the Smarter Balance assessment. The rigor in the problem-solving in the. The rigor in the, the problem solving in the, the just, there's no comparison. So I'm going to ask when these scores, and again, we're verifying the, the ones that just came in. I'm going to ask that we review that again. What's the difference? It's not filling in the bubbles. It is really rigorous problem solving, open-ended questions. It's not just multiple answers can be correct. So I think it's important that the Board maybe take one of the, maybe the fifth grade one and we'll put you through that and see how you do. Okay? Very good. Thank you.
I think the point is well taken. And I think as we move forward for a workshop, not only to look at the scores, but also what are some strategies to address them? As we heard from Principal Johnston last workshop, you know, okay, the, these were the existing SAT scores and he had enormous effort into multiple strategies to address and to help the kids. So I think that's what we're interested. Okay, I think we're all familiar with the scores, but okay, what are the strategies to address them? I think that's what we're interested in. What resources do we need? How do we have to realign resources to really help the students do better? Not just to pass a test, we know that's, that's not our goal, but it certainly is one indicator. So I think that's, that's important. And I just have an antidote here. I was with a friend who has a kindergarten student in the Berlin School District. And when his child went to kindergarten, every kindergarten student got a Chromebook. That, every kindergarten student. We just, we just are so, we don't have those resources. I was bowled over. I was like, kindergarten, every kindergarten. So that means every student in that whole school has one. That, we just do not have those resources. And the inequities are, are very, very clear. And since this is a test, especially the ESPEC test, that is a computerized test, and I think they have changed that you can do it handwritten now, I think that we have to remember that we have a long way to go and to address the inequity. So when we get a chance to talk to our state leaders, I think we need to keep pressing that, that we just, we need the resources.
Just one, thank you. One final comment about the strategies. I mean, you know, I think we don't give ourselves enough credit to that. We don't share it enough. One of the initiatives that I would really been working with the Math Department, in particular with elementary, there's a math phobia out there. A lot of our elementary teachers, really by the grade three, they really don't have the confidence to deliver it. And so what we've kind of done with our, piloting this with our elementaries is departmentalize them. We have our teachers teaching in teams that the stronger teacher who's really confident and loves that math is teaching all three sections, which is a strategy that we don't share often. But Mrs. Freddis has done a great job piloting in that. And it seems to, I think there is a return on investment, but don't quote me on that yet. So thanks.
Okay, number, I guess we have no executive session this evening.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.